Steph, are we ready?
Tell the PowerPoint.
Welcome everyone to the Eugene City Council Work Session for October 13th. Welcome everyone here and at home. We're going to be talking about Envision Eugene today. I was just asking before the meeting how many people we have now actively involved in this, and I think I heard something around 70.
Is that... That's right.
That's right. And some not all the time, but all of them quite a lot of the time. So that's really good. So please, City Manager, why don't you begin the conversation here?
Thank you Mayor, and I just want to say that actually it's been a really interesting process so far, and there's still a lot of hard work ahead of us, ahead of the council. And so what you'll be finding as we move over the next couple of months, that we will be scheduling several work sessions for you on Envision Eugene. And so as we move in towards February, our intent is, is to ensure that you have all the information you need to make some decisions. So this is an ongoing part of that, but we're also going to be accelerating some of that information sharing. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa and her team.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilors. I'm Lisa Gardner. I'm the Planning Director, and we are here today to give an update on the Envision Eugene process. We were last here talking with you in June, at which time we talked a little bit about project schedule and timing, and we discussed the concept of convening the Community Resource Group, which you gave us direction to move forward and do. We spent a tremendous amount of time over the summer working with that group, and today we want to take you back just a little bit to remind you and provide some context about the project goals and state framework, talk about the local principles that are informing the planning process that we're working on, and then give you some of the highlights of the fairly robust public involvement process, which includes the Community Resource Group, and then talk a little bit about project timing. So I'm going to turn it over to Carolyn Weiss.
Hello? So just to remind you, the goals for this project are to determine how we will accommodate 20 years additional growth that we are expecting. Now, in addition to just accommodating that growth, we're also making sure that we are maintaining and possible enhancing the livability of our community. We are preserving those things that we find beautiful. We are also making sure that we have a sustainable and prosperous future ahead and putting those things in place as best we can. There is a state framework that we are following in order to do this work. There's a legal framework, and to put it simply, that framework is there to ensure that we are protecting the farm and forest lands that surround our community. There are two key steps that we need to do in order to do that. The first one is the state will require us to make sure that we are using land inside our current urban growth boundary as efficiently as possible, and we're looking at various approaches to do that. And then if an expansion is necessary, we'll need to follow state protocols for what lands to look at first. So I want to talk, hand it over to Emily, who's going to, has a few more offerings regarding the state framework.
I just wanted to take a minute to address some concerns that have been floating around about the possibility of the Oregon Legislature getting involved in our UTB process. And I want to start with just a short reminder of what you've been told before about how cities are to determine their urban growth boundaries. It's a part of the statutory basic land use program that was adopted by the legislature many years ago now. Each city in the state has to periodically demonstrate that its urban growth boundary has enough land to accommodate its need for the next 20 years based on population projections adopted by the counties. The statute set out a number of general rules about how that's to work, and as some examples, the first step statutorily required in that process is that we prepare a study of our current supply of residential land and the demands that we expect there to be for residential land in the next 20 years. Another example, as Carolyn will explain, or has explained, we need to accommodate growth within the urban growth boundary before we look beyond our current urban growth boundary. It also tells us that the legislature said that DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, would have the authority to adopt rules that provide a lot more detail, and believe me, they have, on how this process is to work. And it also has stated that once a city has adopted an urban growth boundary in these studies, it is within the purview of DLCD, or the Commission, Land Conservation and Development Commission, to review and approve, or remand if need be, these products. So that's what the legislature has done. In our case, in 2007, they took an additional step to say Springfield and Eugene, we want you to have separate urban growth boundaries, each independently having a 20-year supply for your own population growth. 3337, that House bill also included a deadline, and that deadline was for the completion of those initial study, looking at what we have for residential land and our demand for residential land. We have completed that part, that requirement. They did not set a deadline for the actual adoption of a final urban growth boundary in our area or in Springfield's area. And since the time that this council approved that study last April, we'll hear more about how we've been diligently working toward coming up with the final proposal for urban growth boundary placement. We are acting in complete accord with state law. I just want to say that because I'm certain of it, and you need to hear that from me, I think. There is some concern that in the next legislative session, the legislature is going to proactively or at the urging of some party come in and preempt what we're doing, or impose an urban growth boundary that it selects on the city of Eugene. We think that is an extremely unlikely scenario. We don't believe that the legislature will take any action to preempt what the city is doing so long as we are diligently moving toward adoption of an urban growth boundary that is Eugene-specific. And at this point, from everything that I have seen, we are acting in accord with state laws that have been in place for some time. Moreover, you know, if somebody went to the legislature and urged them, and the city in fact had dropped all action on this, was doing nothing, I still in that case would not expect the legislature to actually set an urban growth boundary and impose that on the city. The most I could see happening is, in the case of, you know, the city doing nothing on this project, the legislature imposing a strict deadline on the time by which we will have to comply with all those state laws about where the urban growth boundary would go. I'm going to be here to answer questions when the presentation's over, if you have any on that.
Carolyn's going to talk more about the some things that we're doing.
I'll bring it back locally here. So in addition to these state requirements which we need to meet, we also have local values which we are infusing into this project. And we have been doing a tremendous amount of work in the last years, in the last few years, that lines up really nicely with this project, and we're able to incorporate into this project. A few of the values that I just want to touch on quickly are around housing affordability. This is something that has come up again and again. We want to make sure we have housing options for all different income levels in our community. Protecting neighborhood character, something again that we've been working on for years through the Infill Compatibility Standards Project, and folds very nicely into the work. As you know, the Joint of Elected Officials have been working on economic strategies for the region, and this also is being infused into the work, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later on in this presentation. And then understanding the coordination that needs to happen between our transportation system and our land use system, to make sure that our land use patterns support goals that we have around reducing our reliance on the automobile. So I'm going to hand it back to Lisa to talk about our public involvement.
Are you going to click for me? You want to click? What do I do? Just that one?
This one.
Thank you. I want to talk a little bit about our public involvement process, and first say that one of our primary goals from the very beginning was design, not just a project, but a public involvement process that was extremely accessible, so that we use accessible language, so that we find ways to reach the public where they are, recognizing that not everybody has time for distinct meetings on land use. And when I talk about accessible meetings, what that means to me is presenting the information away, using common language that the average person can understand. And so an example of that, and I would put myself in the category of such an average person, who, if you talk about something in terms of seven dwelling units per acre or 12 dwelling units per acre, I don't think that many people actually know what that means. So if you talk in obtuse terms, a lot of people can't engage in the process, but if you try to find ways to create visual representation of those concepts, it's a lot easier. So that was one of our big goals going forward that we continued to work towards. We've been using, I think, a real mix of some conventional and as many innovative ways of engaging the public. We began kicking off our process with a postcard that went to every household within the urban growth boundary, and it was pretty much letting them know that we're starting this process. It's called Envision Eugene, and we want to hear from folks. And we put in the dates of our planned workshops that happened over the spring. We also, I mentioned, trying to find ways of accessing people. We're all really, really busy. We have a lot of folks in our community that are busy raising their kids or participating in many ways with their jobs, but not having the time to come to meetings. And so we wanted to find out, how could we get, how could we get some of those parents involved? And I know as a parent of a middle schooler, that I pay attention to my kids' homework assignments. And so we infused ourselves into the sixth grade art curriculum, and worked with three middle schools to get art projects. And so this is a teacher working with the students, and they actually had assignments and produced just some really wonderful arts depicting these kids' vision of Eugene. And it was just, it was very interesting to see how sixth graders think about the future. There's apparently lots of baby strollers on that picture, and wind turbines, and things like that. And so that was just a delightful process to be part of. We also held a youth art contest that all students in the area were eligible, not just high school students, but Lane Community College or U of O students. And South Eugene submitted dozens of entries. We held an art contest, that was a juried art contest, and the mayor presented the awards at a First Friday. We had over 100 people there, parents and students, who, I don't know that there was a single face in that crowd that I had seen previously at a public workshop. And so lots of proud parents and students receiving their awards, and that was pretty neat. We also have a webpage where we have, it's very dynamic in terms of being very current. We post all of the public meeting information, work that's coming out of the Community Resource Group. We have videos on there, and we're just, we're doing our best to make sure that it is very up to date. And for people who don't have the opportunity to participate in some of the processes we have going on, they can vicariously participate by looking at the webpage and getting all the information there. We have a Facebook presence, and people like us on Facebook. That's good.
How many friends do you have?
We have hundreds of friends on Facebook, and five friends like this particular page. I don't know what that says. That was this morning. We also have an e-newsletter that goes out to several hundred people, and that goes out every few weeks. And similar to our webpage, it's a way where people have self-selected to get, to receive notification of specific information that we're working on, mostly about our public involvement process. And then we've done newspaper ads, primarily to let folks know about the three public workshops we held in the spring, and we scattered those around geographically to make sure that we're going to the communities across our city. We held the first one at the Hilton. That was our kickoff meeting. We held one out in West Eugene at Churchill High School, and then one at Willamette High School. And we got very strong attendance and participation at all of those, including one on a monsoon evening where it was amazing that anybody left their house. That was at Churchill. So the Community Resource Group, you've heard quite a bit about. Many of you have participated in the process, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the work that this group has done. As the mayor mentioned, we have well over 70 people actively participating. We have invited over 100 people to be part of this, and really tried, as I believe I mentioned when I was here in June, we've tried to include anybody that we think, there are opinion leaders, civic leaders, advocacy group leaders, people that we think will want to be part of the dialogue and from whom we can learn, and helping direct the process moving forward. People self-selected whether to attend, so we tried to put together a very balanced group, and I think we've had sort of rotating participation in a core group of people, 60 or so, that come to pretty much every meeting that we've had so far. We had three days up front, sort of intensive meeting time, where we went through a training, sort of a training process with Bob Chadwick, where we worked on debunking stereotypes and thinking about how do we communicate differently and hearing people differently listening. We have had four or more meetings since then, the most recent one just yesterday. I think this picture, bottom right, was from yesterday. And we're starting to really get into some more of the details of the plan, the elements of the plan that we're working on. So the Community Resource Group, in addition to meeting, we also held a redevelopment tour, I think it was two weeks ago, and over half the group, about 35 people participated on that. This is also on our webpage, so for those who weren't able to participate, you can do a virtual tour, or a self-guided tour, and there's a place where you can put comments in. It was, to me, one of the benefits of doing this kind of a tour is it helps us build common language, common landscape. So when somebody talks about industrial or mixed use or redevelopment, and you go out there and you see it together and you talk about it together, I really think it helps frame conversations really well. And we went all over the city. We went out West 11th. We looked at the Lamb Building, which is the St. Vincent de Paul Building being currently under construction. We went out to the Rexius property where there's a, there's a developing mixed use center concept. We went out Highway 99, out to Bethel, where there's a tremendous amount of existing higher density residential, mixed use areas, and a tremendous amount of kids walking and biking to school out there. All the things that we're trying to promote through our planning process. And so I think that was a very interesting and beneficial conversation that we had. I'm going to let Carolyn talk a little bit about some of the recent and specific work the Community Resource Group has been, has been engaging in this summer.
So back in August, we broke into small groups with the Community Resource Group, and we looked at maps, and we asked a series of questions. And the first question that we asked was, where are the places in Eugene that are sacred to you? And everyone around every table got a chance to provide their input, and then we compiled all that input into maps such as this one that you're looking at. So just some of the highlights of some of the areas people find sacred. At the top of that list is the river, is the Ridgeline Trail and the park system, the bike trails. Downtown, you can see a big heart there for, I think, the potential of a vibrant and active downtown. Also, people were, talked about farmland that surrounds the city, the West Eugene wetlands, and also our education institutions like the University of Oregon and Lane Community College. The next question that we asked was, where are the places that you like? What kind of development do you like and would like to see more of? And similarly, we had a lot of input that lined up real nicely. People like some of the new developments that they're seeing downtown, along Coburg Road at Oakway Center, but they also like some of the older developments or neighborhoods, particularly like around the university, the Friendly Area Neighborhood. They like places that are walkable, and so places, for instance, in Churchill, around 18th and Bailey Hill, and around 18th and Chambers, where there are commercial services that are close to residents. That was a very common theme that we heard. The next question that we asked was, where are the opportunities for change? And where might we be able to accommodate some of this growth? And again, we heard a lot about downtown. Downtown is a place that can handle more capacity. We heard about some of our close-in transit corridors that are along, for instance, West 11th, River Road, Coburg Road. We also heard people begin to talk about areas outside the urban growth boundary should expansion be necessary. And what's interesting about these maps is they have related very much back to what we have been hearing from the general public in our, in our public workshops. So there's, there's a lot of similarities in the feedback there. Then what we did after, after this workshop in August, is we went back and we synthesized this information, and we developed 19 themes that were, that just kind of rose to the top. And of those themes, we decided to focus our next meeting on a mixed use redevelopment strategy. And so our September meeting, we spent talking about, what does mixed use mean to the group? What does it look like? What are the words? As Lisa mentioned, we're working on developing a common vocabulary and terminology so that we share an understanding about what these things are, what these places are. So based on what we heard from that conversation in September, we went back and staff crafted visual examples of what we thought reflected the group was saying, what the group was saying. So we showed a presentation, our last Community Resource Group meeting was just yesterday. So we showed a presentation about these, with these images in it, and I'm going to show you some of them. These are hot off the press. But the first thing that we did when we were trying to define what mixed use is, is we developed a focus area, and based on what we heard from the group. And so this focus area consists of development along the prime high-frequency transit corridors that are designated in our transportation plans. Then we looked at a quarter-mile buffer around those, those specific streets or corridors, recognizing that the opportunities just off of those corridors may be just as rich as the opportunities that happen right along the corridor. So just off those corridors is where we might see higher-density housing, and of course, an interface with the existing neighborhoods. And it's supposed to be yellow. It's a little greenish in this, this slide right here, but that, that's the buffer area that you see in green. And then the next thing that we did is we highlighted the commercial and industrial zone properties in those areas. We heard from the group that they wanted to focus this strategy on those redevelopment opportunities of those commercial properties, and to some extent, industrial properties, particularly along the West 11th corridor. So just to be clear, this focus area does not mean that mixed use redevelopment wouldn't happen in other parts of the city. Lisa mentioned on our tour, we saw redevelopment activity happening, or mixed use activity happening in Bethel and Santa Clara, and it's really working well. What this approach is, is looking at where we might target some of our tools and incentives to encourage more redevelopment in these areas. We've asked for feedback from the Community Resource Group, and since we just got it yesterday, we're still kind of downloading all of that information, but I have a stack of index cards about an inch high to go through. The next thing that we did is we wanted to show an example of what actually one of these areas might look like, and we chose West 11th because of all of the work that has happened on West 11th today. It's particularly through the West Eugene Collaborative. They gave us a good platform to leap off from. So we chose an area along West 11th to model and see how we, how that might be built out to full capacity. This image shows the model in the, of the existing conditions along West 11th. The kind of green swath towards the bottom of the slide is the Amazon Creek, and then the main street going left to right there is West 11th, and this happens to be city view coming in at the bottom, but it could be anywhere. This is very hypothetical. So then what we did is we, we showed, if we loaded that up, we're in a mixed use center, what might it look like at full buildout? And I want to be clear, this is probably more than a 20-year vision. This is a longer-term vision, but we wanted to see what that vision was that we were going for. And so a couple of things, just to show you in this slide, there are some, some yellow-colored buildings, and those represent potential housing. There are the darker red buildings that represent potential commercial uses. The orange buildings might be more of a mixed use building, or what we call vertical mixed use, where you would have both commercial and housing in one building. And then we also have some purple buildings back in the, towards the top of the slide there, that would represent potential industrial uses if those uses were compatible with the, with the surroundings. Another thing that we show is a fairly substantial public investment along the street. So there would be improved sidewalks and street trees along West 11th, transit improvements for better transit, as well as improvements along some of the side streets that feed into the surrounding neighborhoods, because we recognize that we already have thousands of people living just to the south of this area, and by improving the connections to a place like this, then that many people can easily walk to those areas and be served. Another important point I want to make here is that we don't believe we can regulate this into place. We need to be flexible in any kind of planning that we do. An example of that is with the Walnut Station that you adopted just a few months ago, where we, we didn't look at strengthening the regulations to get at what we wanted. We used what's called a form-based code that looks at the form of what we want and pays less attention to the use. So we recognize that there are market conditions that come into play, and very much property owners need to make the decisions that are right for them. We also know this isn't going to happen overnight, so we thought, well, what, how might it begin to phase in? What might it look like in the early stages? And off to the far right side, you see actually the Lamb Building, which is currently under construction, a mixed use building along this corridor. But then what this shows is that, you know, we can't anticipate where this development might happen, but it will probably happen a little bit here and a little bit there over, over time, as property values justify redevelopment in that area. So the next thing that we did is we looked at this study area, and we said, okay, how much capacity might we get in this area for both housing and our commercial jobs? Just what kind of capacity could be held here to, to address our land need? And what we determined is if, if we wanted to meet a substantial portion of our land need for both commercial and, I should clarify, multifamily housing, this is not our single-family housing strategy, but this would be one for multifamily, so apartments and condominiums and that type of thing. We might need to see about a 25% redevelopment rate in this area. And we have a couple of examples to show you of what that might look like. So the gray indicates all the commercial properties in the area, and then the red indicates 25% of those being redeveloped. And it's, it's random. We don't have a crystal ball. We also thought we would take a look at this example that we showed you earlier and show what 25% of that land area would be. And so the white buildings are the remaining buildings, and then the colored buildings would be, would represent a 25% redevelopment rate. Now, just for comparison purposes, we're showing you an example of downtown. And what this shows are all of the redevelopment projects that have happened over the last 20 years in downtown. And as you know, there's been a substantial amount of work and incentives to try to make a lot of this happen, and we estimate that this is between an 8% and 12% redevelopment rate for downtown over the last 20 years. So that's just for comparison purposes. I'm going to hand it back over to Lisa. Actually, there is one more piece I wanted to cover back on mixed use development, and that is, we're continuing our work here. We are working with a consultant who is doing some market analysis of these areas that will help ground our work in reality and identify what is the likelihood of this redevelopment activity happening, what kinds of tools might we need to apply to make it happen. And we're expecting that work in the next couple of weeks, and we'll be, we'll be presenting that to the Community Resource Group as well. So with that, I'll hand it back to Lisa.
Thanks. I just want to talk a little bit about the, how we spent the rest of the day yesterday. We spent the morning in the presentations and talking about mixed use center. We then had invited in a panel of experts that Mike Sullivan actually helped pull together to talk about and help frame and educate the group on the discussion around industrial redevelopment or industrial properties, and what kinds of things should we all know as we think about. We know that we need a job, a strategy for increasing jobs, and we heard, one of the panelists was Priscilla Gould from United Way, and she talked a lot about family wage jobs and talked about, one of the things that really stuck with me was... jobs and talked about, one of the things that really stuck with me was statistic that one in three families in Lane County has difficulty meeting their basic needs. And so that's a translation of, that highlights, I think, the translation of the need for family-wage jobs in our area. So we heard from a state industrial land specialist, and I'm going to have to defer to Mike on the titles if you guys need them, to talk really about what kinds of things in getting state-certified sites for locating industrial lands. We heard about, from a consultant from CH2M Hill, who talked about helping his clients locate businesses, and that were, and provided the context that we're not just competing in Oregon to locate businesses, whether it's renewable energies or solar, green energies, but we compete nationwide and we compete globally. And some of the factors that go into the decisions for where and how companies want to locate, one of the issues has to do with the cost of utilities, and for that reason, the Tennessee Valley Authority and the area that's served by that, really, I guess, has among the lowest power rates, and so they have a very strong competitive edge nationally for getting some properties. Talked about the land use process, and so having a site on a property that has outright zoning permitted use is obviously really highly appealing. Having to go through a conditional use permit is not. Having wetlands of any kind, not good. So the kinds of things that companies think about when they cite. So we heard from that panel of experts, we had an opportunity for our Community Resource Group to ask questions. I think it was a really dynamic conversation, people got a lot out of it. We also had, we heard from what referred to as sort of our internal content experts. We have a lot of people on the Community Resource Group with a tremendous amount of expertise on our local dynamics, local economy. We heard from Rusty Rexius in talking about having a business, and some of the challenges of not just having a local business that wants to expand, and how do you figure out where to site within our, within or outside of our urban growth boundary, how to either expand in place or how to move. We heard from him also that his particular company has some benefits in being in the trade sector economy, so that those kinds of jobs actually help him provide benefits locally, but not having that makes it much more difficult for a company to provide benefits in family-wage jobs. Pat Johnson talked about some concepts around what makes Eugene uniquely Eugene. So rather than just trying to compete globally for any kind of business, what do we have here locally? Well, we're 500 miles from San Francisco, and we're 500 miles from Seattle and Vancouver, and for LEED-certified businesses, we have timber mills, and we have a product that perhaps we could look at creating an industry here that allows us to provide wood, building supplies for LEED-certified buildings up and down I-5. And so some of those, I thought was a really interesting concept, and interesting just to hear the different ways of looking at what kinds of economic factors and industrial jobs we want to try to be ready to make happen in our community. So we broke into small groups in the afternoon and had, you can see folks rolling up and looking at maps and having conversations about what types of, what types of industries should we look at, what thing, under what conditions would you, would our community support different types of businesses or industry, and even getting into conversations about where should they be sited. And so as Carolyn mentioned, this just happened yesterday, it's been less than 24 hours, and we have a lot of information to sort through and sift through and come back at the next meeting. So in terms of the Community Resource Group, we have currently three meetings scheduled. Our next one on November 3rd, where we plan to continue the economic development conversation. And similar to having a mixed-use conversation in August and then, or September, then coming back with more of a visual plan, we'll plan to do the same thing with all these other themes as we move forward. In November, we'll go, we'll talk about single-family housing and mixed-use, we'll continue the mixed-use conversation, and then December, we hope to pull together some of the draft plan concepts. We may need to have more time with this group, we may need to double up our meeting dates so that we can really go through what are, not just complex issues, but a tremendous amount of analysis and other things that we need to sort of flesh out what that plan looks like, translating the values and the goals into easily understandable plan concepts that will start to frame the plan that we're going to bring before you. The overall project timing, I just wanted to walk through this really quickly. Community Resource Group I just mentioned has a few more meetings scheduled between now and December. We're also working with technical resource committees or process internally and pulling in experts, both consultants and local experts, and tapping their expertise on specific issues that we need to understand better. Public workshops, we have our next public workshop scheduled for October 28th at the library, and that is what we're calling a map room, I believe, and it's an opportunity for people to come in and look at some of the maps that we've been, that we've been producing, that the Community Resource Group has weighed in on and produced. We anticipate having a couple more public workshops, and then we anticipate scheduling a public hearing, not part of the formal adoption process, we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute, but an opportunity for the council to hear from the public on the concept that we're putting together before your February consideration of a draft plan. We have boards and commissions at the City of Eugene, Sustainability Commission, the Human Rights Commission, the Historic Review Board, the Planning Commission, all of whom we would like to hear from in terms of what elements are we considering, what are we not considering, or what kinds of things should we be including in our plan, whether it's affordable housing, access in terms of who will be involved in the process, and that kind of thing. The Planning Commission will continue to be involved, and we've also scheduled a joint meeting with the council for November 22nd. It's an opportunity for you to get together with them and talk about some of this. And then we'll continue coming back fairly frequently between now and February to talk through both the ongoing work of the community group, but then the specific technical products that we're working through to make sure that we're on target and that the council has all the information that you need to make an informed decision in February. The Board of County Commissioners, as you're aware, are a co-adopting jurisdiction, and I think three or four of you were at the, I guess I'll call it a workshop, last month, where Richard Whitman from the Department of Land Conservation Development, he's the director, came down, scheduled by the county, to talk to all, actually, all elected officials in Lane County, and staff were there, to discuss sort of the framework for amending or adopting an urban growth boundary. Talked about the relationship, the role of the county, he talked about some of the tremendous challenges, and not just sort of technical and legal and preparing a process, but then walking through the state acceptance of that process. And so I think it was a really good foundation that we all had a chance to hear. Carolyn and I went to the Board of County Commissioners, I think it was on September 29th, and gave a presentation to them, basically getting them, that was the first time we've gone to them formally, we had had some meetings with individual commissioners, giving them an opportunity to hear sort of our plan approach and how we're working on this. And it was a really good work session. They asked us to come back at the end of the month, and we'll continue to work with them, not just to sort of educate them and inform them what we're working on, but to try to identify as early as we can what core issues, concerns, or goals they would like to see as part of the process, so that we can articulate them, try to plan for them through the process, as opposed to waiting to the end and finding out that we haven't met their expectations. And so we're working really proactively to do that, and as I mentioned, I think it was a very productive meeting on the 29th. So that's, I think, that's enough, that's about 30 minutes. So we're here to answer questions.
I wanted to add to what the comments about the number of community members that are, have been involved in this process, and just compliment our staff on the high-level, high and broad level of commitment and staff to this process as well, really bringing a lot of our talent to the table to try to help the community walk through this. Just I appreciate it very much, and I think the community appreciates it very much. Also wanted to say that I'm really glad you're doing that, walk along with the Board of County Commissioners, because I think that's really important, and I'm glad you've gotten good feedback, and I hope we'll continue to do that. Any way we can be helpful, let us know, let us know that. In your list of groups that have to kind of intersect with this as we work toward the decision-making time, I just want to be sure that the Housing Group and the Human Rights Commission are both part of, part of that, because they will have a lot to say about the social equity, part of the triple bottom line, so. That, other questions and comments from Chris?
Looking at your group of people that are involved, I'm really impressed with the breadth and diversity, it's really good. Number 77, I'm not so sure about. I'll let you look that one up.
Yeah, I'm really curious now. John, do you have your iPad handy?
Alan, have you looked at the list?
The thing is-
He thinks I made them.
He's on the list.
Touche.
Yeah, that's good. This is an extraordinarily scary thing. I mean, because of the nature of what we're talking about, it involves people's homes, their businesses, their livelihood. I can see how this is a profoundly scary thing to even talk about, and so it's really important that we work very deliberately. And what I appreciate is the effort you're making to not only have this conversation, which has happened in the past in different ways, but you're trying to do it in a way that, to me, is much more accessible and inclusive and non-technical. In the past, when this conversation occurs, it's tended to be kind of an exclusive group by nature of being so complicated. It's technical, you have to be very well-informed, you have to be knowledgeable, you have to study it, and that became almost a self-selected group of people who were anointed enough to be able to talk about it. And that, then by its very nature, limited the conversation, and a lot of people could be disenfranchised and left out. By using the system that you've used, I think, granted, it looks like it's simplistic, but it's really not. In fact, some of the most simple-looking things are very complicated just beneath the surface in order to make them simple, I think that's what you've done here. I like the fact that you have tried to cast as broad a net as possible, and you've actually brought in a lot of people who haven't necessarily participated before for a variety of reasons. So that really gets at kind of the notion that I'd rather do it right than do it fast. And I'm very appreciative of Emily's observation that there's a very low likelihood that we're going to get in trouble with the legislature or with the courts. We're doing this the right way, we're showing due diligence, and of course, I think if we look like we're being sincere and we're doing this the right way and we're going to come up with a good outcome, I would imagine that we can, we can do this. We're not going way off the timeline, but I think we're really focusing on doing this right, rather than doing it just fast and achieve some of the failures we've done in the past as a result. Failure meaning not really talking about it the way we should. Which gets to my last point, that for a long time, we have tried to have these conversations as if they were symptoms on a sick person. My elbow hurts, treat the elbow. My ear hurts, treat the ear. That's impossible, you can't do that. It's a holistic discussion. And so the ability to talk about this holistically is the only way we're going to be able to come to a solution that gets all the different pieces connected. I think that's what you're trying to do. So rather than treat the symptom, which is what we've done in the past, we're really trying to treat the whole, which I think is a much smarter way to approach this, and I really appreciate the effort to get there.
Mike, you're next.
I appreciate very much how hard staff is working to fulfill the manager's direction and request and where you guys are taking this, very, very much. I know that this is an innovative way to approach this task, and you guys are doing yeoman's work to try and accomplish it all. I have a number of concerns, the first of which is different from Chris, what I just heard Emily say. As a part of the process in May of '07, I made a couple of motions at Budget Committee that we begin, back then, funding and doing our own land studies, because I believed that we weren't doing a good job. But all along, the manager and all along, the legal counsel that we got said, we're doing periodic review just fine, we're doing things at the appropriate speed, everything's going just fine. I don't think the legislature agreed with that. I think their near-unanimous passage of 3337 was a message to us that we weren't moving fast enough compared to what Portland does, compared to other communities, and that we weren't getting the job done. And I think that I have great concern that if we don't stick to the kind of agreement we've talked about here, about the timeline for accomplishing this work, I am concerned that they may give us some direction, at least about the timing of what we need to get done, if not what the work product will be. And to that end, I'm really happy that you've checked in with the county in the fashion that you have. I would hope that you would begin to look towards some of the new people who will be seated at the county's commission table here come January, because that's obviously a part of this process. And I've heard comments from some of them already, and heard about comments from some of them, that give me great pause about the process moving forward at the county level. I feel very comfortable that Eugene, as a community, will come up with a good answer and will come up with something that will work for all of us to move forward. But how that gets through the county is of great concern to me. I watched Springfield put forward their stormwater plan and go through nine readings at the county, and it's still not passed. Now, I think that delay of what we come up with accomplishes the end that some may have there, and I'd hate to see that be the outcome. So I'm hopeful that we can do more to engage the county at this point and make sure that they're, they understand clearly Richard Whitman's comment, that they don't get to rewrite the rules or the basis by which we make our decision, but only to say, did we accomplish that? And I would hope that there's a further review of the basis on which we co-adopt. I only have a couple seconds left, so I'll get to my other questions with a second round, please, Mayor.
All right, George Bowling?
Well, I just would like to extend my thanks to the staff and all the community members for the work that they're putting into this. This is a major undertaking, and it's, it's not only addressing the immediate concerns of our community, but it's also addressing the future of our community, so it's very, very important work. Back to the West Eugene Corridor study information, was that a hypothetical, or just was that done to just show if these numbers were plugged in, this is what it would look like?
Yeah, I think really what that was, so as our, as the CRG started talking about redevelopment and redevelopment rates and mixed-use centers and what it could look like, Carolyn mentioned anchoring terms and making sure we all had a common vocabulary for talking about things. Some of that vocabulary is visual, because when we started talking about mixed-use centers, we found that some people really thought it meant, or for them, it meant just the vertical mixed-use, for others, it meant mix of uses, side by side. And not, not everybody thought that it necessarily meant beyond the corridor, just on the corridor. So what we tried to do is take that conversation, reflect it back in that model. It's hypothetical in the sense that it's not a plan or proposal, it's not parcel-specific, but it's showing that if we started to apply some of these concepts, here's what it could start, how it could start taking shape. And that if we start to look at a potential redevelopment rate, throwing out the 25% redevelopment rate number, and giving that, sort of a scaling of that compared to the one that was sort of a greater build-out, maybe 50-plus years from now, gives you a sense of scale. It's actually still quite a bit to achieve that by comparison with the work, the downtown redevelopment we've seen the last 20 years with lots of different tools. It's just to give people a sense of scale, so that we don't have false expectations or assigning, the term I've heard members of our CRG use is phantom capacity. So we don't want to assign phantom capacity, we want to be able to look at what does it look like, what does it mean in terms of scale, and then what would it actually take in terms of the market reality and any incentives to make it happen? Because we can't just say it's going to happen, and therefore it will. We need to have a higher level of assurance in the market and the technical feasibility of that, so.
My concern is that we understand, and you understand, and the CRG understands that it was hypothetical, but the way things occur in our community, I'm just afraid that this is going to get out, people are going to start talking about it and say, well, this is what's going to happen in the West Eugene Corridor.
Picture is reality.
So it needs to be reinforced whenever you can, that it was just used for demonstrative purposes and trying to help the CRG move forward.
We didn't put street names on there on purpose.
Maybe it's this hypothetical example across the top.
Doesn't make any difference.
You can't repeat it too many times.
And I too appreciate the fact that you're taking this to the Board of Commissioners. I just hope it's on a regular enough basis. But what I would like to see is some sort of a report back to us, the type of feedback that you're getting from them, the type of questions they ask, the kind of issues that they are raising, and a response to those, if we have one at the time. So we can kind of keep ahead of that, so we're not just dumping it all on them at one time and saying, here's what we're doing, and they're going to say, well, don't do it this way, this is the information we have. So I'd like to kind of keep a two-way flow going on that. And the last thing is, in reference to Chris's "do it right" or "do it fast," and then Mike's opinion on moving forward in a more timely fashion, or maybe the state might step in. I'm not so concerned about the state stepping in, but I do want us to stick as closely, in fact, I don't want to go beyond our own self-imposed deadline, not because of what the state may or may not do, but what the community is going to think of us. If we can't set a deadline on a project, even though it's a major project like this one, and we can't stick to it, involve the community involvement and come up with a workable solution, what are they going to, what's the community going to think of us? So we need to make sure we keep this thing moving and as rapidly as we can to meet that deadline.
Alan, you're next.
I wanted to acknowledge staff for all the hard work they've done, innovative things that you've done. I've seen that presentation a couple of times now, Lisa, at Oregon League of Cities as well, and all the innovative things that you've done, I think you've done a really good job. My worst outcome for this process was- My worst outcome for this process was that we polarize and that we set up camps and we shout across the abyss at each other and we don't get anything accomplished. And I think, and my best outcome is that we come to a near-consensus position where we all work and have the same vocabulary towards getting towards a vision and therefore a plan towards what Eugene looks like in the future and how we're going to grow. I think we're on the right track, but I'm nervous about us getting there. I agree with Chris that it's more important to get it right than to get it fast. I also agree with George that the deadline is important. Deadlines are good. They're great for me at work and they're great for us here, and we need to stick to them because they force us into making decisions and getting there. Yesterday's work at the Citizens or the Community Resources Group, the panel, I was a little disappointed in the panel in that it was pretty one-dimensional, that it was a very traditional thought, it was kind of rear-view mirror kind of thinking to me. I don't think we can get to where we want to be with this vision by looking through the rear-view mirror. I think we can't plan for tomorrow with yesterday's knowledge. It wasn't forward-looking enough for me, especially with regard to the new economy and the new green economy and where we want to position and what our competitive advantages are here in Eugene. The consultant, one of the consultants said, "The perfect industrial slot is 25 acres square, flat, next to a highway." And we don't have any of those, nor do a lot of communities, but some might be creating them. What he didn't talk about was, and also has extremely low, or extremely high property tax exemptions with great incentives. That's kind of the chase-the-golden-ring kind of theory about economic development, where you can go after the golden ring, which is a high-wage manufacturing jobs. And it's sexy and exciting, and everybody can grab onto that because it's real clear. But 80% of our jobs come from small businesses under 100 firms. Going after the golden ring there is kind of very improbable, and it's becoming a global competition. And it's becoming a bidding war, a bidding war where we circle or spiral down into where we've seen, and I've seen several studies that have shown the incentives given away actually end up with a net economic loss for the community as opposed to a net gain. And our local examples are not very good either, both of the two ones that I'm thinking of, Hynek's and Sony, both left, right, certainly after we had, the tax exemptions went away. So I'm not sure that's the right strategy. I think we need to be a bit more broad than that, and I'll talk a little bit more after the next, in my next round.
Well, just a couple of comments here. People have put in a terrific amount of hours, and I wanted to sort of acknowledge the amount of time that a lot of community members have put in. I mean, long hours on multiple days out of their lives and their workday. So this is a sizable commitment on the part of people out in our community, and they're giving it with, really, across the spectrum, they're giving it because they really actually believe we can do this. I just want to relay that to you. And as we go through these conversations, you see people talking together and doing that thing that people do when they really do open up, is that they walk, they express their opinions, and then they find how much agreement they actually have, and then they keep building on that. So it's an iterative process, and it really has a lot of really good function. And everybody's a little scared because you don't know exactly where you're going, but they're really quite committed, I think, to getting there, and we owe them as a community a lot for that. They're trying to have a new conversation, and they've kind of given themselves over to doing that. I was really pleased, speaking of iterative, is that Kate Purley came to the last meeting, has been added to the group because of her, because this group has, as we do, a high interest in food and all of the sort of localization of food effort and protection of farmlands and all of that. And so she's been brought into the conversation, is already a really valued player in the room. Within the first day, she's in every conversation we're having, so, you know, these people add a lot and are taken really, really seriously. And I would say, in relationship to the fear that people will assume that the model is not just hypothetical, there is in that room, at least for now, across the board and the entire group, a consistent support of transportation corridors being what we're trying to do our mixed-use alongside of, and a belief in part of the transportation corridors including transit. And that is really clear and true of the whole group at this point. So, just so, that's been part of the conversation. And the one-dimensional thing that Alan mentioned, I felt that way too, but then I felt like it really caused a conversation to happen that needed to happen, which is almost everybody in the room pushed back on it. And I thought it got us to a different place in the discussion, because I heard one person who came in with very strong notions about how much industrial land and maybe some of that bigger manufacturing, and was at the, by the end of the discussion, said, "Well, maybe that isn't the best thing for what we have in our community." So those conversations are iterative, and it isn't just from the left or the right, is what I wanted to express to you. Mike, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to say, Emily, I'm not trying to jump at you when I made those comments before. I wasn't trying to be insulting in any way, I apologize if I was. I was really saying that, that concerned me only in that I heard Dennis Taylor say the exact same thing, "Legislature will never do that." I mean, he said it point-blank to my face, and he was wrong. And I'm just concerned that we-
Wasn't a lawyer.
Yeah. And so the process, I think George brought up a very good point, that when we've decided unanimously that this is something that we feel strongly about doing, I think we ought to stick with it. The process with the county is an important one, but I think many of you probably read Paul Conti's piece that he wrote for the Register-Guard about this. I thought it may have been overly critical, I think, of staff, in my opinion, but I agreed with one of the suggestions that he had as a place that may help us with this process. And that is that I want to assure that with so many people involved and so many community members putting in so much time to try and come up with something that we all see as a vision for our future, that we do the best we can to ensure that that's the final outcome and that it isn't derailed in some way. I think that's the best outcome all of us are looking for, is that this vision and this product we create is what comes to pass. And so I liked his idea that we find some way to help ask for the legislature's advice, even perhaps, or consent in some way, to help enshrine what we come up with as giving it, for lack of a better way to say it, I suppose, a good housekeeping seal of approval on what the city comes up with. Can you speak to what is possible in that regard, or what you think from a joint resolution request, or anything like that, that we might be able to do to further what he suggested?
Sure. First, I want to say, you know, when the legislature acted to adopt House Bill 3337, they were looking at a city that was postured very differently with respect to how it was dealing with its urban growth boundary. Everything that you've heard today shows us, you know, the phrase I think I use is, you know, "We're diligently addressing the need for a new urban growth boundary." And for that reason, I do think we're situated differently than we were when the legislature chose to take action under 3337. I don't disagree with your observations about where we were at that time. With respect to, I think what I'm hearing is the idea of affirmatively going to the legislature and asking them to basically endorse the approach or the product, at least the main points, that this body comes up with. I haven't seen the legislature take that kind of action. They certainly have the power to do so. We, across, you know, all different departments and good minds within the city and without, have been thinking very strategically about how to get whatever this body decides should happen done, how to get it done. And there are many strategies that we have talked about and will continue to talk about. Legislature is certainly always a possibility. However, going to the legislature before the formal public hearing process will have started is something you would definitely want to talk more about. Anytime you're going to the legislature with a proposal, we would want to talk to you in-depth, and I think with Brenda Wilson most certainly involved and at the table, to consider the political, the policy, and the public involvement aspects about the timing of what you're doing and specifically about what you're asking. So, you know, I don't know if that helps to answer your question. It's certainly something we could look into and get more specifics on what this body may be involved in doing, and providing you a more in-depth response with some options and-
I appreciate that. And the answer to that kind of gets at my key point here, which is that I'm hearing the manager say that what you guys will bring forward to us by our deadline, by the end of February, will be a package of decisions that will substantively give direction, and everything else from there is the details of passing the amendments that are necessary to get this done, but the large-scale decisions will have been made. If that's the case, then I'd like to get us some endorsement, some backing, some support for the large-scale decisions we will have made. If the answer is, "Well, we can until the details are actually done," then my point is, we haven't finished the details by the deadline that we set.
But I think we need to do is to do more research on this and give, talk with Brenda and others about some of the specifics of what we're able to and not able to do. So what I would suggest is, we can get back with this body with some additional information about how to do that.
Okay. Alan, you're next.
My suggestion on that is that we have, that we bring in our delegation, anyway, and give them, either as a group or more likely individually, updates of where we are on a regular basis. Maybe a group meeting with follow-ups of individuals or individual meetings with counselors to talk with the delegation, make sure they're up to speed where we are, so that they're not surprised when January comes around, or February, or March. So I think that's a very good idea. I'm not that worried about it. I think we're on a path that shows that we are trying to get there. We don't want to put ourselves in the same position as Woodburn and, what was the other city, Camby?
Bend.
There's several of them where they've all been sued and remanded back, and now they're four years later and they still don't have anything. That's another worst outcome, because we didn't take the time to do it right. So back on to where I was going before, one of the things that was handed out at the meeting was this chart about where Lane County's economy has been and is now. And the interesting thing about the pie chart, it broke it up into different categories, is the difference between 1976 and 2009, what's that, 25 years later, is that the manufacturing went from 22% down to 9%. More than half of it's gone. And a lot of people think that's the holy grail, where we're going to make, we have to make stuff in order to have high-wage jobs. And that the service sector has gone from 9% to, or 17% to 41%, almost two and a half times. When we're talking about where we want to craft our economic development strategy and where we want to put these things in the land use context, we need to be cognizant of what's going to happen over the next 20 years, which businesses stay here, which ones are transient for the long term, and where do we think the jobs are going to come from? And what's our best strategy? I don't want to put a lot of emphasis on the golden ring strategy because that proportionally, because it's not the, not going to be that where most of our jobs come from. The themes that I took away from the meeting yesterday were that almost everybody had the same concept, that we really want to think about redevelopment first, and have a really heavy, and have a lot of strategy about that. At the table with me was Rob Bennett, and we talked about how the economy is affecting that, and that we have this actually an opportunity, since the economy's slow, to actually take time to prepare in those areas where we want to redevelop and get the tools in place and all those different things that we need in place for redevelopment to occur. Because redevelopment actually is a little bit behind the eight ball in terms of open greenfields, because it's much more difficult, much more expensive to do. So the economy's being slow actually is an opportunity for us to plan for that.
Thank you. Chris, you're next.
Oh, thanks. It occurs to me that in many ways, the legislature doesn't wake up one morning and say, "Oh, we need to go and jump on top of Eugene for not submitting their plan on time." Oftentimes, those are the result of somebody going up and lobbying for action. In fact, the original 3337 was the result of somebody lobbying for it. The legislature didn't originate that, it was something that they were asked to do. And so if the legislature's going to come down on us for not showing due diligence or whatever, my suspicion, it would be, it would be the result of somebody going up and lobbying for it. If that doesn't happen, that's not me saying we don't need to meet our deadlines. I agree, we need to take every effort we can to meet our deadlines. If we say we're going to do it by this time, that's what we need to try to do. But we need to try to do it as right as we can, because as Bob Chatbrook likes to say, you can do it the first time, quick and wrong, and then you wind up having to go back and do it all over again, which I certainly don't want to do either. So let's try to meet our deadline, but let's really do the best job we can. The second thing, I wanted to agree with George with regard to plans and maps. Anytime you put out a piece of paper, it becomes what's going to happen, and it's going to happen tomorrow. I watch a show on the Discovery Channel where the world will end in six billion years and people start collecting water. You know, it's going to happen tomorrow. And so we really need to be very clear that it's hypothetical, it's a possibility, it's just what might happen, because folks run with these things and they go really crazy. I've seen it many times in the past. And then the last thing I wanted to mention about the traded sector, because Hynek's, the best example of that was in my ward, is they were given a property tax exemption, absolutely, and they were here for just about 10 years. They didn't leave because the property tax exemption ran out, they left because the bottom fell out of the chip market. If that hadn't happened, they'd still be here. But during the time they were here receiving those tax exemptions, they were paying over 1,000 people millions of dollars of family wage jobs. My son had a job there, and he got paid really well, and he had benefits. They were the largest single property taxpayer in Lane County. In fact, their property taxes were equal to the next nine put together. So they were an enormous economic engine for this community, and it's sad they left, and I'm sorry they left, and I don't want to put all my eggs in one basket, but if that basket should come along, I'm certainly going to take it and take advantage of it. And so we need to factor that in. It doesn't become everything we want about economic development, but we have to recognize that the traded sector is, in many regards, a very effective way to keep your economic development engine running.
Betty, you're next.
I could have some comments on that, but there is another company that came and left that I left so long ago, I don't remember the name. I remember they were paying $6 an hour, and they got big tax breaks, and they got infrastructure built for them, which is something else we do for a company that comes in. We build the infrastructure, and you're not counting that. People then don't count that as part of the expense of their being here. Also, well, that's not the topic right now. But I wonder if you have a, I only went to the first session of Envision Eugene, I haven't been to any others, so I do see the list of names, but I know that some of those names, some of those people are not going to the meetings. And I'd like to know who is not going, who has dropped out. It looks pretty heavily weighted. I looked through all the names, I see about a dozen that are not part of the development community in some way. So have you eliminated consideration of the possibility of not expanding the UGB? Is there any possibility that people could, that you could come up with saying, "We'd keep the same UGB"?
So first, to address the first question first. In terms of the folks that are continuing to participate in the Community Resource Group, it's been a dynamic group, and I think, I just got an email this morning from somebody who wasn't able to make it because they were at a board meeting that they had to attend. So because these are what I refer to as sort of opinion leaders or community leaders in so many ways, they have busy, dynamic lives. And so I'm not aware of anybody that's dropped out. There are people who haven't been participating in every meeting. There's at least two people, well, one person, one of our Historic Review Board members, got a job and she can't meet on Tuesdays, but Andrew Fisher came in her place yesterday. So, and then another person, I think we might have communicated with you on this, he's a consultant, his work schedule doesn't really allow him to be there every day. But he's a member of the Sustainability Commission, and there are three other Sustainability Commission members who participate. So we addressed that at the Sustainability Commission when we went to them last month. Nobody's let me know that they've dropped out. As far as participation and representation, we've done our best to invite everybody that we think will have a sort of a stake in this. Not everybody has been able- Not everybody has been able to make it to the meetings, but I think it was a pretty balanced group, and we even invited the council to give us other names if we didn't think of people. And so we have Thousand Friends of Oregon, both Mia Nelson and the executive director, Jason Minor, has participated. We have lots of local advocacy and natural resources members representing. We have people representing low-income housing neighborhoods. We have a huge representation from neighborhood associations. So it's been a dynamic group where we've added people. There were five new people came yesterday. So if there's someone that you have in mind that we should be inviting, we'd love to know who that is. But there's always a self-selection factor that I can't control who comes. I think it's been a good process, and I think it's advertised itself well. Not everybody's been happy with, you can't make everybody happy, but I think we found a pretty good balance of pace, level of information, and progress that are keeping people coming back. So we don't have enough, we can't add any more chairs to the space we're in that's getting, so I think that's, I think that's a good sign of good participation.
So...
So that was your first question. And then you asked about the urban growth boundary.
That's the main question.
Right. So Carolyn talked a little bit about this. The state framework actually requires that we do everything in our sort of due diligence to look first within the urban growth boundary, to look at what strategies do we have for densifying redevelopment strategies. We talked a little bit about that today. But I also talked about the phantom capacity issue. We have to make sure that we're not assigning densities and capacities that won't play out in the market, that won't play out in the public opinion, the public's, in terms of what it looks like. So I couldn't tell you today definitively whether or not we're going to expand the urban growth boundary. I think as we look at the different land types, I think we're seeing pretty clearly that it looks like we can accommodate commercial within our existing urban growth boundary. It looks like we can fairly easily accommodate multifamily. You saw that we're going to be coming back in the next couple of months, looking at single-family and then spending more time on industrial. So we'll know more in the next couple of months, how and where, and how comfortably we can accommodate within our existing urban growth boundary. And then if we have to look outside, there's the very clearly prescribed process for how and where we look at that. So we'll bring you back more information on that in the next month or so.
And I hope we keep in mind what Alan just said, and other people have said, that we shouldn't plan for tomorrow based on what happened yesterday.
Absolutely.
That things can change. We could end up being a community that is mainly multifamily housing. There are places where we might have big apartment buildings who may change the way they live because, and we don't know how much we're going to grow. And then the last thing I wanted to say is, when the decisions are made by this group or even by this council, I hope that we're still open to public opinion because they're, not everybody in the city knows that this is even going on in spite of all your efforts. And when you've made, there are people who say, it's either too early or too late, either I can't get involved right now, or I don't have time, or I didn't know enough about it. And then they say, then they realize what's happening, and then they're told, too late. So I hope it's not, won't be too late after we finish this process. Thank you.
I guess I would just add to that, that it's never too late until it's done. They've been sort of going through a very iterative process. And so, and the other thing I would say is, in the room, the tension that's in the room, even with everybody working as hard and as well together as they are, and I've experienced this in every group like that I've ever been in, you've got some people, it just couldn't be done fast enough. And you've got some people who are, have an unending need for detail, and so you've got both of those, and you have to kind of keep working them forward together. And that is, that is the tension. So we don't ever have a meeting where somebody doesn't worry that it's going to take too long, and we don't have a meeting where somebody doesn't worry that it's going to go too fast. It's just, it's sort of the nature, but it's also been my experience that if you keep working with it, you can, you can get to that point where you, everybody says, okay, I can live with this. And that's, that's the eventual goal here. So, and what a break it would be for the community to be able to come together with this kind of vision. So I've got Mike in the queue, and then Alan. Mike?
Yeah, I want to take off on something that Chris was saying because I think he hit on a really important point. I know and appreciate that we're going to be talking about industrial and economic development issues in the next Community Resource Group session. But I think there's an important point in what he and Alan were saying there, and that, and when we look nationally, that 70% of the United States economy is consumer-driven and commercial and service-driven, and that we're finding that that's absolutely unsustainable in any way, and that we're importing manufactured goods from other countries and borrowing money to do it. I think we've all seen that that's unsustainable as an economic model. So I'm interested, as was said, in looking forward and saying, what do we do for our area to make it economically as independent as it can be? What are we doing to support the businesses that are already here? And when I look around at companies like Grain Millers, who had to move away from the area because when they wanted to expand here, they couldn't, at Glory Bee Foods, who wanted to expand what they were doing here and look at a new green industrial park, and were not able to do so and have now started to sell the land. These things concern me because we're not adequately planning for, how do we have what I believe, contrary to what Alan said, is going to be very important, and that's manufacturing-based jobs in our local area, and specifically around agricultural products and secondary production of agricultural products. That sort of manufacturing and industrial capacity in our area does two things that are critical. One, we have the highest unemployment rates we've seen in a very long time, and it needs to, our solutions need to be ramped up beyond what's normal in order to meet that. That's what the future demands. As well, that Chris brought up, our system of local government is based on property taxes. The county is, the city is, the majority of the monies that we're running our systems on are on property taxes. And the only way we're going to afford to do the things we're wanting to do is not to create higher taxes, but to get, but to create more taxpayers. And I think we're going to do that by creating the sort of opportunities for companies that are going to do manufacturing and that are going to do agriculturally-based production in our area that will create greater opportunity, and green technologies that will create greater opportunity for us to have higher property taxes to support the services people need, and to have the kind of jobs and wages that we hope to have. So I'm, that, planning for that is critically important to me. And when I looked at that map, I know it was a hypothetical, but it showed small, along West 11, so much commercial industrial as a proportion to what else was there, it seems like looking in the rearview mirror to me. And I'm hoping we're looking forward to the stronger importance of manufacturing and industrial.
Well, if I could just, if I could just add, it sounds, some of what you just touched on, and I think Councilor Zelenka touched on earlier, was really, I think a lot of what we heard at the small group discussions yesterday touched on exactly those issues, that we really need to create this diversified portfolio. You can't put it all on the golden.
Right.
So you have to look at, you know, we need to be equally prepared for smaller industrial, for commercial, and make sure that we've got, not just for new opportunities, but for nurturing our existing opportunities. And so as those conversations happened all the way around the room yesterday, we're going to start sorting through that and bring back sort of the framing of what that could look like in terms of a policy direction for that.
And I think too, with the last couple of seconds, am I over? Okay.
Alan?
So just to be clear, I did not say we shouldn't pursue manufacturing. I think we absolutely need to do that. We need to make stuff here. The question is how and which areas to target. We need to be strategic and realistic about that. We need to have a diverse strategy that covers a lot of different areas because we're not going to be successful in all of them. And I, it's okay to chase the golden ring, but it needs to be proportional to the jobs and the probability of getting those, given where we are. And above all, we certainly don't want to give away the store when we're doing that, as many communities have. I mean, we wanted to have a diverse strategy, just like everybody has in their retirement portfolios. We want to have a pie that has a lot of slices on it, not focused in on one. And it needs to be proportional to the reality and the probability. And we also need to support the existing businesses, I agree wholeheartedly, and make sure that they stay here. That's number one. And then getting other people to come here, and then which ones is the second most important part. I will put my voice in for those who think the pace is too slow. I'm anxious to move on. You know, lots of people, yesterday, were talking about taking off the training wheels or ready to ride the bike.
That's right.
I think that's very much true. And I think, just as a tidbit, half-day sessions, either morning or afternoon, will get more people there, as opposed to chopping it up at the middle of the day where you have the morning and afternoon. And the question I have for staff is about February. And what is it exactly that we're going to get? What does that look like? What are those hard decisions? Let's be more specific about that, John and Lisa, and how do we get there from where we are right now? Because it makes me a little nervous when I look out, how are we going to get to February from where we are right today?
I can give you the broader overview, and then you can weigh in on any details you need to. My intent in February is to present to the council a package of decisions, however you want to describe it, in which you are, think of it in sort of the deal points of a deal. You know, when we say, in this case, a line, a line on the map, you're adopting a UGB, or an amended UGB, I guess is the right term for that.
It's actually a new urban growth boundary because we don't have our own.
Yeah, okay. So you're, so you're actually identifying a UGB, you're identifying...
Lines on the map.
Yeah, lines on a map. You're identifying strategies with reference to the infill and what Lisa's talked about for using properties and all most efficiently, and here's how we want to get to that point. And so I think you're, you're actually saying, here is what the deal points are, which is backed by data and analysis and all those kinds of things, which then you say, yes, and then what we're doing is, is moving that forward. There will be a formal adoption process the county still has to go through, it has to get submitted to the state. And so there's a formal adoption process, but my intent is, is that what you've approved in February, barring any sort of unusual piece that comes up, is what is the final product.
And incorporated in that is the flexibility we've been talking about?
Yeah, I was going to talk about that towards the end that we...
You can talk about now.
But part of what we've talked about is, is how to ensure that we have frequent updates and an opportunity to revisit the assumptions that we've made, and then be able to adjust to what's actually happening on the ground. Because one of the concerns that people have expressed, and I have the same concern, is that we're basing information, we're basing decisions on the best information we have available. By the time you get 20 years from now, that information is at least 20 or 25 years old. So you're making the, you know, you're still working off of that information. And so what the key really is, is that we adopt the plan, and then we have periodic visits of that. It could be every five years, it could be whatever the right timeline is. And what we do is, we are tracking all of that, and we're making sure that the assumptions actually occur. And I'll give you an example, and again, purely hypothetical. What you saw on the map there was, in order to have one of these transportation corridors really absorb this kind of density, it's presupposed on a 25% build-out rate, or redevelopment rate. Well, if it turns out that we're actually redeveloping at 45%, we're getting more density there, that has some impact on sort of the future growth. If it turns out we're only getting 10% based on what's actually on the ground, that also has an impact. And rather than waiting for 20 years to figure that out and make some changes to that, we're doing that in much more real-time kind of thing. So that's the, that would be the importance of that. And we're not calling it Jaws of Uncertainty because I don't think it's exactly what that is, but it's in the, it's that same general principle that says, we're assuming this, if it goes here or here, let's make that adjustment in five or six or seven years, not 20 years down the road. So that's the piece of it.
Right. I particularly like that because planning laws that were in 1970, it's kind of that kind of planning technology, and we've evolved since then. And making irrevocable decisions for 20 years based on information we almost certainly know is going to be wrong seems like a dumb way to plan. So having flexibility within the plan to adjust it as we move forward, given new information, and having these periodic reviews, God, if we do it in less than five years, I'd shoot you. And so would your staff.
So in some ways, it becomes just a regular part of our work plan.
Yeah, right.
Always doing that. Generally, people like the idea, how specifically we do that still needs to take a lot of peace with that. The one thing I do want to make sure when we talk about coming in February, our intent is to come with what you will move forward. There is still a formal process, so somebody's, you know, there is some formal public hearings, et cetera, et cetera. And if there's something that kind of plays into that, that all of a sudden you say, wow, we've just heard something that we weren't expecting, or something different, you do have the opportunity to change it as you move forward. But the intent is, is to have you make those decisions in February that we're, as staff, planning on implementing.
So it's like, we will, we will make the decision points, the deal points, the bullets, and then we will say, go make the contract and make the deal happen and get it signed.
Right. In this case, I mean, the contract in this case involves, and this is just what I jotted down while John was mentioning, was talking, you know, once you have informed staff, you know, it's sort of like, how many chickens? Okay, now we'll go write the code for that many chickens, and we'll take it through a public process to determine what the public thinks about that many chickens. If only it were that easy. In this case, you know, because that's going to be a cinch, right?
This might be less...
Yeah. Bad example. But in this case, with those deal points in place, we will then work to get that, revisions to the metro plan that we will work through with our partners in Springfield. We still will share what's left of that plan. Crafting for public review, a new comprehensive plan for the city called the Envision Eugene Plan, we will probably have revisions to the public facilities plan based on what you direct, and to transplan very possibly, and other transportation plans. There will be refinement plans that may need some tweaking. This is going to be a heck of an ordinance. We will need to finalize that residential land study and that economic opportunities analysis, and we'll have some code amendments. And depending on where this body goes, there may be other incentives or, you know, programs that we need to look at. So with that direction, those materials we put together, and as required by law, those will travel through the formal process for public consideration that you have in your code.
And I think one of the things to remember of why I think what we're doing is what we're trying to do, what we're trying to do is have all of the stakeholders, which really is the community, to say, we're okay, we support those deal points. And so as we go through then the formal process, we're going through the formal process with agreement on the deal points, which is different than if you take a look at sort of what happens and what has happened in other jurisdictions, which I think then drags it out for five, 10 years to go. And so that's what we're trying to do at this point, to really get agreement on those deal points with enough specificity around there so people understand what that means. It's not just a general concept, but enough specificity, and then we can work through that.
Right. One more quick question, I know we're running out of time. Infill compatibility standards, opportunities, citing work that we've done, that we've kind of set aside, how does that get integrated into this?
So it's actually not really set aside in, in reality, because the principles of that, Carolyn mentioned that earlier, so the local principles, that's what's informing the strategies and concepts that we're pulling together. And after we have sort of the deal points in place where you say, yep, this is where the UGB line should go, and this is what our strategy, efficiency strategy should be, the infill compatibility, part of that's going to be in the implementation strategies that we put together. So we may need to come up with additional code language that makes sure that we have the best protective measures in place for our neighborhoods. And so that's part of the stuff that we work at, we work towards post-deal point agreement.
So that's when that comes back around?
Yeah, but it's still very much embedded in what we're doing and the values of how we're putting things together. We're not waiting till February to think of, to take that off the shelf again.
So George Brown has a question. George?
Thank you. Will there be a map with a dotted line that says, this is, this is what managers, staff, and citizens group...
Exactly.
...the 70 people recommend?
Yep. Exactly. It's actually what the staff recommends, and that we'll be, hopefully be able to tell you that the Community Resource Group has nodded their heads and said, may not agree with everything, but I can live with it.
So the answer is yes, there will be a map with a line on it?
Will we have an opportunity to see the map before that day?
You'll have an opportunity, as we come back, we'll bring you the components that will eventually define the map. So it won't be a surprise on the last day what it is. We'll be building that, the plan elements, and then we'll bring the whole thing once... We'll be building that, the plan elements, and then we'll bring the whole thing once, it's sort of like a 10,000-piece puzzle. We're still turning over some of the pieces, we're starting to get the edges, we'll fill in the rest of it, and then we'll bring it back to completed.
And you will have more than a weekend to look at the map, so there'll be...
So I've got Mike and Chris and George all in the queue, and I can't see how we can possibly do that in the time we have.
I'll pass.
So I'm just...
Extend?
I'll give my time to George.
I think they're all fine.
Actually, she answered one of the questions, comments I had.
I've spoken enough.
Well, and if it's, if it's sailing, it'll come back the next time, too, right?
We'll talk about this again.
Thank you very much.